Okay, thank you for being here tonight. Welcome to the Select Board Meeting of January 8th. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I want to let everyone know that this meeting is being recorded on local cable, Easton Cable Access, and it is being broadcast live. And you will be able to look this up on the Internet on their, on ECAT's page. And we'll start with introductions for the board to ensure we have a quorum.
Jamie Stevens.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottefull Genetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And Select Board member Jennifer Stacy is not able to be here with us tonight, but we do have a quorum. So we are going to get one more thing. This meeting is a Zoom hybrid meeting, so if there are people that are watching this and have a question, pose that question in the Q and A. Sean will be monitoring that, and we will try our best to answer the question. If you do that, you'll need to let us know your name and address for our minutes. So we have, the first three items are timed items for adjudicatory public hearings. These pertain to liquor license violations. And particular facts that are unique to each of these are in our notes, along with bookmark attachments for our records. There's a letter of notification to the licensee for a public hearing for alleged sale of alcohol to a minor. Notices of hearing, Easton Police Department incident reports, alcohol beverage control ABCC compliance check guidelines, notices of compliance checks posted in the enterprise, the Easton Select Board's liquor license violation policy, the Easton Select Board's alcohol enforcement compliance check policy. Town Council Jay Tallerman is here, and he is going to guide us through this process. Jay, do you want to talk about the stipulations?
Sure. So, thank you, Jay Tallerman, Town Council. We've done, been doing this for a number of years in a really organized way. Many thanks to the Eastern, Easton Police Department for doing such a professional job with this. It really makes it, makes it helpful. Also, thanks much to Connor and his staff, as well as the Select Board for having a good set of policies. Most towns are not as organized in this as you all are, and it makes for an efficient annual process. So liquor stings are part of the licensure process generally. The town does them, post them. They're required to advertise when they're doing it. They conduct them. They use underage operatives to go into packaged stores or establishments with a pouring license. If they find a violation, they report that violation. There's a police report, and then these hearings get posted with due notice to the license holders. Generally speaking, if this matter was to follow the statute strictly, if there was a dispute by and between the police department, what the police department did and the license holder, we would have what is essentially a mini trial. It's an evidentiary hearing. It's much more informal than that. But I would be calling either the underage operatives or a member of the police department to walk, walk us through what happened on that particular evening. They would have comments. The license holder would have the opportunity, if they so desired, to cross-examine or to offer their own statements on that. What we have found in the past with license holders in this process, not only here in Easton but elsewhere, but especially here in Easton, because we've really got this process down to an organized and expedient fashion, is we suggest to license holders that if they want to, we can stipulate to the facts. That is, stipulate that someone who is underage was served with an alcoholic beverage or was sold an alcoholic beverage. And if that is the case, then we would just proceed to a discussion of where we go next. Warnings, remedial measures, any penalties that we have. I think it works a little bit easier for the license holders, and it provides a mechanism to talk about what we're going to do prospectively rather than to rehash or to have discussed as a whole this process. With that in mind, there are three potential violations to be discussed tonight. All three of the license holders have agreed to sign a stipulation, agreeing that on the day that there was a sting that in fact an underage person was serving. With those stipulations, you have one in your packets already, and I have the other two here. We do not have to go into, although it could be part of the discussion, any of the particular facts of what happened that evening. Rather, we can discuss the mitigating circumstances, where we go from here, if there's a penalty, what that penalty will be along the range that you generally prescribe for penalties here. This board has always been incredibly professional and consistent in that I think this helps that process. So, makes my job a little easier, makes the license holder's jobs a little easier. And what I would recommend is that when you open up each of the particular hearings, and you should open each of them, should note that there is a stipulation. Invite them to come forward. Just discuss generally where we go from here, and then if there is a penalty to be meted out, what that, what that might be, and that would be part of that discussion. So it will shorten the time period and allow it to be more productive rather than adversarial.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to start off by just making general comments to all the, all the businesses to say that when we issue a liquor license, we are very clear that this happens once a year. There is a compliance check. This is a college town. We don't trick anybody. Nobody has a fake ID. There's nothing to, it basically, the underage operatives go in, sit down, order a drink. If they don't get carded, that's, that's where it starts. So, I mean, the rule of thumb is card everybody. Card everybody if they're under 50. In fact, I saw a little bit of a comment on Facebook. Somebody was upset because they got carded at Leandro's this week, and they felt that they were old enough that they shouldn't have gotten carded. And I said, excellent, because that's what really should be happening. It's uncomfortable for us to have this hearing tonight. It's uncomfortable for you to be here. This is not our goal. We don't like to penalize our restaurants. They're a big part of our economy, and we dine at your restaurants. And, but we have to make sure that this doesn't happen, and especially if it's more than the first offense. That means that your people aren't being trained properly. And I know that it can be hard when there's a lot of people coming into a bar. You have to figure out some kind of a way to keep track of who is in there. I've talked to other establishments. They have different, different ways. You know, you could have bracelets. You could make sure everybody runs a tab if they're going to stay there. But you have to find a way, because we don't want to have you back here again. So with that said, we're just going to go in order. The other thing that I will say is that we generally, for a first offense, we do a two-day, a two-day license suspension. For a second offense, we do six days. We, we look within a four-year period to see how many there are for that. If it's, if it's within the four-year period and there's more than two offenses, we can go to 12 days. 12 days taking a license is really, that's, it's not optimal, right? So, and also, if we have continued violations, it's also within our purview to not renew the liquor license, which we haven't ever had to get to, thankfully. But I do want people to know that that's how serious that this is. So first, we have, let me see. La Familia, the Amayas, doing business as La Familia? They are not yet, no?
They submitted the stipulation, so it's possible that they will not be coming.
Okay.
So they've stipulated to, so it might just be a one-sided discussion.
So this-
I believe, I don't think anyone's here. I didn't see them.
They could have been, they could have traveled, so they submitted the stipulation in advance.
Right.
Okay.
Do you want me to read this?
Yes, please.
All right. The Select Board of Easton as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, Easton Town Office's 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, January 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM for the Amayas Incorporated, Doing Businesses, La Familia, at 520 Foundry Street, Easton, Mass. To show cause why the restaurant, all alcoholic license, should not be modified, suspended, or revoked for violation of Mass General Law's Chapter 138, Section 34, sale, delivery, or furnishing alcoholic beverages to persons under 21 years of age, and CMR 204-2.052, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit sale or delivery to persons less than 21 years of age.
Okay. So, so Amaya, Doing Businesses as La Familia, they have not had a compliance issue before. This is the first one that they've had. What we've always done for that is to have a two-day suspension. Does anybody have any thoughts or comments or questions?
I will note that their counsel, when he reached out to me, asked if Monday could be one of, a Monday could be one of the days if there is a suspension. I asked him if they were open on Mondays. They, they did confirm, in fact, that they are open on, on Monday. So just note that request.
Well, I appreciate you saying that, because that is one of the things that we try to do. We're not trying to put anybody out of business here, but we do have to be consistent, because year to year, we can't say, you know, this one gets this day, this one gets that day. We're, we're very consistent in how we approach this. So for the, for the first offense, the two-day, we would entertain doing that on a Monday or Tuesday.
Monday and Tuesday. Do we have a particular date that we want to do? Or is that a negotiation?
I think we could, we could vote on it, and we could ask Sean to, we could give Sean the ability to pick the date with them. Sorry. Pick the date with them to make sure that, you know, they're aware of what, what the policy is from there, what happens, how they have to have notice and so forth. So.
I have no issue with two days on a Monday or Tuesday. I think that's fair.
I agree.
Would you like to make a motion, Craig?
So I move that we suspend the liquor license for La Familia for two days, a Monday and a Tuesday, with the dates to be designated.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb. And let's do a roll call vote on this, because it's a Zoom. Jamie?
Stevens, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Okay, excellent. Can you read the second one?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Jen Stacy's here. Is she going to move for a voice analyst or is she somewhere that she can?
I don't, I don't know if she, can you, Jen, if you're, if you're listening to this, could you signal if you want to be moved into the meeting? Keep an eye on it, and let me know if she wants to be moved in. She might not be in a place that she, she can talk. All right, Craig?
Okay, the Select Board of Easton as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, Easton Town Office's 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, January 8th, 2024, 6:00 PM for Cousins Italian Cuisine LLC, Doing Businesses, Leandro's Italian Restaurant, at 402 Turnpike Street, Easton, Mass. To show cause why the restaurant, all alcohol license, should not be modified, suspended, or revoked for violation of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 34, sale, delivery, or furnishing alcoholic beverages to persons under 21 years of age, and CMR 204-2.052, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit sale or delivery to persons less than 21 years of age.
Okay. Do you want to come up? You just want to state your name for the minutes?
All right. Michelle Leandro.
Emily Leandro.
So this is your second offense. You had an offense on April 7th, 2022. So, so two, two in a row, two years in a row, which is a six-day suspension that we've, we've always done. Did you want to comment on it? I mean, I know that you signed the stipulation, but if there's anything that you wanted to say, you're welcome to say it.
I just want to say that, like, what we did, so we, after they were there, we let her go, because she was there when the first time happened. We had a meeting. We did all the tip certify. We have like monthly meetings. We have trainings. Every, every meeting we have, have quick meetings on the weekends when everybody's there, just reminding everyone. And when that happened, the first girl, we just suspended her for like a couple of weeks. But we said, everybody, if that happens again, we're going to have to let you go. So the other, you know, be an example for the other ones, because we cannot keep someone-
Right.
Unfortunately, I put a show that all those restaurants can relate is shut off the employees, and we, and we training them for the best stability that everybody has, and it's a human error. We don't condone it with that. We feel very, very, I would say, embarrassed to be here on this matter, especially the second time. The cops did everything they could do. They're doing their job, and unfortunately, and then we failed doing ours. And I hope that will be the last time they'll be here.
Us too. Us too. Well, we, does the board have anything?
Yeah, I would just say thank you for being here and speaking, you know, as, you know, straightforward about it as you, as you have. We really appreciate that. I think it says a lot about your establishment practices they've put into place, and like you said, it's an element of human error, one that you still have to have consequences.
Yep.
And, and you've seemed to have made that point for your staff. And moving forward, they understand the consequences and severity. So thank you.
Mark, did you have something?
The same. I mean, the fact that you guys are here, you're taking responsibility for it. You have acted already. You know, it's, it's very unfortunate that this, it's consecutive one year after the other. I think if it was, if there was space in between, there would be room. But because there isn't a lot of space, you know, we're held to our policies. But thank you for being here. It says a lot.
Thank you for being here. It's a shame, but we have to do what we have to do.
You're right. Well, keep training your staff and, you know, even have managers kind of spot-check it to see if they see, you know, groups of people that look like they're younger or a couple of people that are younger come in. Just kind of, you know, have somebody keeping an eye on that. We appreciate that, as much as you try to train and do things. Sometimes things happen. But like I said, this, this, this isn't pleasant for us either. So it is, it would be six days. We would be willing to break that up into two, two times of three days, if that makes that better for you.
It does, it does.
So like a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then another Monday?
Are you open on Mondays?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
So we could do a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of one week, and the next week, another Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah.
We have had this kind of a suspension before where the restaurant opted to do it all in one week and just close for that week. So I just want to give you some flexibility of how you want to do that.
Three, three days would be better for us.
Okay. Do you want to look at a calendar and see when you would like to pick those? Or would you like to coordinate that with Sean after the meeting?
I think we can choose.
Yeah, do, how far can you do it? Can you do it during the summer?
Good question.
No.
It has to be quicker.
It's got to be within the, the next, you know, reasonable amount of time.
Yes.
That's a good question, though.
Very good question.
And we can do next week, like 15, 16, 17.
Okay.
And then we do the following week?
And we can do the first week of-
February?
Just, I'll have to do like two weeks.
In a row?
Or we can-
We can skip one week.
We can skip one or two weeks.
You don't have to do it consecutive.
Yeah. We don't have to do it consecutive.
We've broken it up before.
So if you guys allow us, we'd like to do 15, 16, 17 of next week in February of-
31st, 4th and 5th?
Now the February 5th, 6th, and 7th. If it's possible.
That's our reason.
You both, okay. Then that's what we will vote on. And Sean will be in touch with you to give you all the particulars on that. So, okay. Would you like to make a motion, Craig?
So we, we move to suspend the liquor license at Leandro's on three days in January and three days in February, the 15th, 16th, and 17th of January, and the 5th, 6th, and 7th of February.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Stevens, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Genetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Craig, the, the third hearing is Shinow Restaurant.
Select Board of Easton as licensing authorities will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, Easton Town Office's 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass. on Monday, January 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM for Restaurant 138 Doing, Incorporated, Doing Businesses as Shinow at 620 Washington Street, Easton, Mass. To show cause why the restaurant, all alcohol license, should not be modified, suspended, or revoked for violation of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 34, sale, delivery, or furnishing alcoholic beverages to persons under 21 years of age, and CMR 204-2.052, permitting an illegality on the licensed premises to wit sale or delivery to persons less than 21 years of age.
Would you like to come up?
I'm Chef owner of Shinow. I'm so embarrassed and here for the time. This is bad.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
And I would, I would, I would go back there and then, you know, make a meeting or tell them, you know, I have work to do, to check more into it. Because I was short-staffed lately, so.
Okay. Well, you know that when you have a violation and you can't sell liquor and you have to close those days, what an impact that is to the amount of money that you bring in.
Yes, I understand. Is that possible that, because I'm going to shut down for like maybe a week or two? Because I'm going to do the renovation for the, the whole places, you know, and then make a new menu. So is that, can I choose on those day?
We, we could do that. If you are, if we give you a sanction, depending on what that is, and you were going to be doing a renovation, and you were going to close for that week anyway, you're certainly welcome to do a renovation during that period.
And I can take the, the penalty on those days, too.
Mark, you look like you want to say something.
We, if we wouldn't offer a closure on a Monday because they're closed.
Right.
Then we can't be like, oh, what is the week that you're doing the renovation?
No, we could do the number of days, but not-
Like minus the Monday. Subtract the Monday, because we don't open on Monday.
Right.
Right.
It's six days.
Well, if it's six days, too.
So if you've got six days, it would be-
Count on six, right?
If it was six, but, but we haven't even gotten to that part yet. So why don't we get to the part about how many days it is first? Because yours is a little bit different, and we haven't had this before.
Yes, I understand.
So you've had three viola, this is your third violation within four years.
Yes.
But when I go back and look at the date of the first violation, so we have to look within, we can look within a four-year window. That is like a month out of the four-way, out of the four-year window. We have a lot of discretion as to the extent of, so that, that would be up to a 12-day penalty. I'm willing to ask the board to consider thinking of this as a second penalty, a second violation, because you are just a little bit outside that window.
Okay.
And give a six-day. But I want you to know, it could be a 12-day. We, we could rule on that. So I'm going to see what the board thinks on that. I mean, that's, that's how serious this is. We haven't had somebody come in for a third offense before. And I'm very concerned, because if this happens again next year, that's really, that, that would be cause to really consider your liquor license, and we don't want to do that.
I understand that.
So what is the board's feeling about entertaining the six-day versus a 12-day with that period of time?
Do we have to do six or 12?
We have to be consistent with what we've done before. And for a second violation, we do six days. We've never had a third violation.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So this is a little bit unique. It's, like you said, it's a month outside of the four-year window. Could we consider it on that basis and make it a 10-day? Or, or an eight-day? I'm just thinking of more than six, yet less than 12. The circumstances are a little bit unique. We haven't had this come before us before. And if, and I understand, we want to set a precedence and then stick with that as well. But I'm just asking you to look at it as maybe two additional days, maybe eight days.
I guess from a council's perspective, if you have a bright line test, you have a bright line test. And so you should be considering the range. And I understand completely where you're coming from and the sentiment and the rationale behind it. But if we have a, if we have a policy that says the old ones lapse, then I would have concerns of relying on one that has kind of fallen outside of the radar, whether it's one day, because where do you draw the line?
Sure.
If there are other specific facts that warrant something the highest end of your potential range, then I think that that's, that you can work on, because those are the facts. But if you have a rule that you, that old violations fall off after four years, I think you should respect that. But if there was truly like egregious circumstances that set them apart from other similar violations, then, then I think those might be grounds for exceeding the normal six-day. But I think you should stick to that, the facts versus the timeline, because the timeline's the timeline.
Yeah, understood.
And this is outside of the three years by like three weeks.
That was confirmed, that it was just outside.
Yeah. So for all intents and purposes, where we draw the line, this is on the other side of the line. So this is-
Second.
Second offense.
Right.
You just made it.
Thank you.
Well, we haven't voted, but-
We haven't decided yet.
But I mean, if that was within, I would, I would stick to it and go with a higher suspension. I would be advocating for that, as Jamie had suggested. But you're within, it's very concerning. You know, three violations in four years. It's very, very concerning. If it happens again, and it's a fourth violation, I mean, that's going to be, and I'm so cognizant of how this can negatively impact your business and your income. And that's the last thing I want.
Craig?
Well, the rule is the rule.
Right.
You know, I, I agree with Jamie that we gave six days for somebody for two, and, and one week or one month over that four-year. That's, that's a tough one to swallow. But it's the rule, so we go with the six days and hope that it doesn't happen again.
I hope so.
What are you going to do to train your staff so that this doesn't happen?
I'm possible, I'm not, I'm going to get in a manager or a supervisor on the floor, you know, and then have them like, what would that, you know, train them, and then, you know, look at them, you know?
So we used to ask if people, if businesses had a card reader to read the license. But this doesn't even apply. We, we're not even going to ask that anymore, because this is about not even asking for the license.
I'll make them like check all the IDs.
So they have to check every ID.
Yes.
If I go in there, card me, and I'll say, thank you for thinking I'm 21. But no one's going to be offended because you carded them. And if they do, just explain to them, it's important for our business.
People would like it, you know, because they say, they think, oh, I'm still young, you know?
Okay.
The only time I would ever get offended is if I was under 21.
Okay.
Beyond that, you can card me all day.
So please, please do that, and please take it seriously and let the rest of your staff know. If you need help in understanding training or anything like that, let us know, we'll get you some resources, okay? Because we don't want you back here again. We only want to come for like ribbon cuttings and, and ceremonies and things like that, okay? All right, so we're saying that it's going to be.
Six days, and it will be dependent on negotiations with Sean about what days?
I would rather have Sean look at that on the calendar with, with him so that he understands what the impact of those days are. And so it would be a Tuesday through Sunday, six days?
Probably, I'm gonna shut, shut off for one week.
Okay, do you have the dates you want to do that?
I'm still waiting for my contractor, because he didn't have time yet. He's probably just within just two weeks.
Well, I'm talking like by tomorrow, you need to talk to Sean and pick the dates.
This is Sean, by the way.
Yes, okay.
Sean will call you and, and, and pick the dates and.
Okay, yep.
So.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, you go ahead.
So, so we move to a six-day suspension, a Tuesday through Sunday, to be negotiated between the owner and Sean Duggan.
Second Lamb.
Can I just suggest one stipulation to that?
Sure.
And that is that just knowing how contractors and work on premises can sometimes not happen when you want, I assume you want this penalty, like just like we spoke to with the last folks, within the next month or so, or month and a half or so. So when you speak to them, this can't be May or June.
No, 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 within, within, within a few weeks.
Okay.
Within a month.
Within a month.
Within a month.
And there's.
Because I talked to him last few weeks ago, two weeks ago, he's like, he has, he still have a job, so he, he's probably next two weeks.
Okay, so we don't care about all of that, we're, we're gonna ask you to pick a week within, within the next three to four weeks.
If he doesn't do it, I still have to shut down.
If he doesn't do it, you're still shut down. And they do check to make sure that you're really shut down, so please keep that in mind.
Yes.
But we're not gonna work around a contractor's schedule. We're being very generous by letting you pair that up with, with a contractor's schedule.
Okay.
But that's, that's as far as it goes, so Sean will be in contact with you, okay?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, the motion is six days, a Tuesday through Sunday, and dependent on, within one month, and dependent on the conversation with Sean.
Correct, and second.
So that's Bajra and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bajra, yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Okay. Jay, thank you for being here tonight.
Nice to see you, Jay.
Guiding us through that. I do want to make a comment before we end this part of it, just to say that, you know, there were three violations tonight. Last year I did, I was better prepared, and I had the list of all the businesses that we have that have liquor licenses that were in compliance. And I think it's really important to note that there's, I don't know, probably 40 other licensees that, that passed the compliance. And we want to really thank them for being diligent and making sure they do card people. I think so much we focus on, on the ones that were not in compliance, and I'd like to just recognize all the businesses that do the right thing.
No package stores at all, and this is the smallest amount of violations here we've had in years.
Yep.
And I think we should thank our officers for good work, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. You're okay to go. He will call you tomorrow. We'll take a vote to close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing.
Second.
Bajra and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Bajra, yes.
And we're just gonna switch seats here.
Thank you.
Bye. So next on the agenda is, right on time, is board and committee appointments. What, am I missing something?
Yeah, is that now or is that 6:30?
No, that's at 7:00.
Oh, it's 7:00, I'm, okay, I stand corrected, I apologize.
So we have three appointments, the Cemetery Commission, Gary Taragua. This, this would, has applied to be on the Cemetery Commission with a term expiring June 30th, 2026. Is Gary here tonight? No? Okay, so this is unopposed, and Gary did send his information in. If somebody would like to make a comment or a motion or a.
Thank you, Gary.
Go ahead, make the motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gary Taragua to the Cemetery Commission, term expires June 30th, 2026.
Second, Bajra.
So that's Lamb and Bajra, that's a roll call vote.
Stebbins.
Taragua.
Taragua, thank you.
Lamb, Taragua.
Full Janetti, Taragua.
Bajra, Taragua.
Okay, next, the Recreation Commission. We have Sarah Morrison who has applied, and this is a term expiring June 30th, 2025. Sarah, come on up. Thank you for being a new person, a new face to, to be on a, to try to be on a committee. We, if it's uncontested and it's somebody who is already on the committee, we don't generally say they have to come in, but for new people, it's nice to kind of get an introduction and an introduction to the public to be able to see it. So if you just want to briefly tell us about yourself and why you want to be on the Recreation Commission?
Sure, my name is Sarah Morrison, and I am a mother of one child who is happily partaking in some recreation activities in the community. I've been in Easton for approximately 20 years officially, about 16 years, a homeowner. And my husband grew up in the town. I am, for the past 22 years, I've worked in Quincy, Massachusetts as the executive director of a nonprofit agency there that serves youth in the community, so Quincy After School Childcare. We serve 500 youth every day and run a full summer camp. And my entire background, I'm a graduate of Providence College many years ago, but my entire background in history has been working with youth and serving my community. So I'm really passionate about that, both things, but also as far as the Recreation Committee here in town, I want to make sure that there's ample opportunities for all citizens and learn more about what the Rec. Committee is doing currently and where it can be potentially improved for the community, so that's my.
Have you got, have you gone to any of the meetings or watched any of the meetings?
For the Rec. Commission, I have not.
Okay, do you know when they meet?
I am learning that it's Wednesday evenings, second Wednesday of every month.
Okay, I'm glad you know, because I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either.
I believe that's the case, yeah, I reached, that was one of my first questions.
And you'll be able to attend those meetings?
Yeah, I will finagle my board meetings at work to make sure that that works.
All right, great. Any questions from the board?
Just coming from, as an executive director of a non-proper organization that services 500 youth, you said?
Yeah.
So I think you sound very well qualified, so thank you for stepping up.
Of course, yeah, I'm excited about it, thank you.
Agreed, we, it sounds like we're very fortunate to have you going for this, so thank you for stepping up.
Of course.
Welcome, and thank you very much for replying.
Thank you.
I like that you recognize the fact that most people, or not most, many people think the Recreation Commission is for youth, youth activities, but it really isn't. We have, you know, the gamut from, from young to the oldest and every kind of activity you could imagine. So it's important to me personally that, that we do have that lens on the whole spectrum, and it's not just geared to either, you know, just one particular age group. So thank you for commenting on that, and.
Yeah, of course, I think that's really important, from young parents and non-parents all the way through senior citizens, want to make sure that everybody has ample opportunities.
Exactly. Okay, well, Craig, do you want to make a?
I move to appoint Sarah Morrison to the Recreation Commission, the term expiration of June 30th, 2025.
Second.
So that's Bajra and Lamb?
Stebbins Morrison.
Lamb Morrison.
Full Janetti Morrison?
Bajra Morrison.
Thank you.
All right, and so the town clerk will reach out to you, they'll talk to you about how to get sworn in and get you information to get you on your road to going to those meetings.
Great, thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is Tricentennial Committee, this is contested. There are two open seats with three applicants. The seats have term expirations of June 30th, 2024, the, both of the two seats. So we have three applicants, Joan Lundgren, Rosalyn Miller, and Chris Ventresco. Chris is not able to be here tonight, he's traveling. And I'm going to ask, I assume you're Rosalyn? Rosalyn, if you want to come up and introduce yourself?
I'm Rosalyn Miller, I've lived in Easton for 28 years. I am currently the Assistant Secretary of the Tricentennial Committee since August. I'm co-chair of the cookbook, excuse me, when I get nervous, I can't think of the.
Don't be nervous.
Cookbook fundraiser. I am a trustee on the board at Gaslight Village Two condominiums as a treasurer for several years, and I work at the town hall for the elections and for early voting.
Okay, so you just said you're the assistant treasurer to the Tricentennial Committee?
No, I'm sorry, Assistant Secretary.
On the Tricentennial Committee?
Yes.
You're already on the Tricentennial Committee?
There's non-voting members.
Right.
Oh.
It's such a big group that they need volunteers to sit in and.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't know that about that committee.
It wasn't specific.
Any comments or questions from the board?
A big thank you for everything you already do for the town, including with, you know, our voting in elections and what you've been doing for the Tricentennial Committee and volunteers. I love that, when people want to get involved in a committee, and you've already been out there and you know what they do, you know what they're, what projects we're working on, you're heading up the cookbook, you know, which I can't wait to see, maybe even try a few recipes on, so thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you.
I mean, you definitely have an advantage, because you're, you've already been at, at the meetings, you have a post and a responsibility, and the fact that you, you know how much work it is. It's, it's a heavy load for a volunteer committee. I mean, they're, they're meeting twice a week, and there's events in between, and we're not even in 2025 yet. So the fact that you, you have been doing it for months and you want a permanent post, so you know what you're up against, you know the task at hand, so I think that speaks volumes.
Great, Craig?
I had the privilege of meeting Rosalyn at the HOA meeting for Lamp Lighter recently, and I want to thank you very much for stepping up.
All right, well, thank you. We're gonna interview the next candidate, and then we'll vote after we interview her, so you can stay and wait to see what we do, if you would like.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next contestant, Joan Lundgren, come on up.
Hi, Joan.
Hello.
Hello, Joan.
Hi, Joan Lundgren, 20 Reynolds Street. I'm volunteering because I think it's an important event. A couple of people have asked me to put my name forward and fill out an application, and I am, I have experience doing fundraising, putting events together, and I think I, I could lend something to it.
So what do you do now that would lend itself to that? If you want to give us a little bit of your background?
My background is in finance, but that was many years ago. I've been in Easton 21 years. I currently work part-time for Oakseam's Memorial Hall. I rent the hall and help with events there. I'm also on the Shovel Town Cultural District as the vice chair.
All right, any comments or questions from the board?
Just thank you as well, and for all the things, all the events you're a part of, and you're a staple in town in terms of, you know, when I think of organization and getting things done.
Oh, staple.
No, no, I really appreciate all the volunteering all the way.
Thank you, thank you for saying that.
The same, and so you obviously know that the workload that's involved in this, and how things are, you know, it's, it's intense right now, and it's only gonna get way more intense. I can't say that enough. If you see the amount of events that are planned, Rosalyn, you, you can speak to it, but. So I just want to make sure you're up for that challenge.
Mm-hmm.
I was not surprised to see your name come up for this committee, Joan, so thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
So Chris Ventresco, there really, I don't, he is a local photographer, and I'm sure he would have a lot to, a lot of ideas, he's a very creative person, a lot to lend to the committee as well. He's not here, but everybody here knows him, so just want to mention that.
Yeah, absolutely, if I could speak a little bit about Chris. So Chris is also, he's one of those non-members who participates in almost every meeting. So he is, he participates in these meetings, he has been, he does the photography, he's gonna be handling the photography to capture the event, the years-long event. So he's not, you know, he has skin in the game, so it just makes this decision that much harder, because he's, he's already out there, much like Rosalyn, and he knows what he's up against, and he participates, and he's a valuable member, non, you know, non-voting participant. I'd be remiss if I didn't share that, just, again, just makes it harder.
So, well, this is a very difficult decision when we have three people looking for two positions, especially when we have three people that are very active in the community and volunteer, and have demonstrated that they're, they're volunteers that can be counted on. I will say that this is a committee, like you say, that people can help with, even if they're not actually officially as part of the board. There have been a number of changes on the board, so whoever does not get appointed tonight, there's a possibility that there may be another opening, you know, just by the nature of that board, how, how it changes, and these terms are to, to June of 2024. So I think there's other seats that renew at that point, too. People on these, these longer-term committees, sometimes people's situation changes, they can't dedicate the time, there's been people that have moved, so just to kind of keep that in mind. And Mark is the select board representative to that committee, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mark. I'm sorry to put you in the hot seat, nobody likes, nobody likes to be in that position. It's honestly, it's one of the most difficult things that we do. It's very, very hard when we have three good candidates for two seats.
It is, it's extremely difficult. You know, I, I look at Rosalyn and Chris, and they're already participating, and my concern is if one of them isn't appointed, will they continue to participate? Because their participation is, is one of the ingredients that's making it so successful. And I hope that if, if, if one of them isn't chosen or appointed, that they continue to participate, because I know Joan brings a lot to the table. She knows a lot about the town and the inner workings and this tricentennial event. So that being said, I definitely support Rosalyn in this, I'll start with that.
So you're nominating Rosalyn?
I'm nominating Rosalyn.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's Lamb and Bajra, and that's a roll call vote.
Stebbins Miller.
Lamb Miller.
Full Janetti Miller.
Bajra Miller.
Okay.
Anybody want to talk about?
Well, I, I want to say this, that I, your sentiments, I agree with, and thank Chris again publicly for what, all that has been given and, you know, and hope to. And you're right, it seems that it keep, you know, these spots keep coming open.
They, I agree, no.
I just want to thank Joan, and I'm gonna, I'd like to appoint Joan tonight, just, you know, coming out, and we do know the skill set that she brings as well. But again, hoping that Chris still looks for that next opportunity.
And I think he will, I think he'll stay on and go for that next opportunity. And if he does, that will be very much noted, but I'll second your, your motion.
Okay, so that's a motion by Stebbins and a second by Lamb, and that is for Lundgren.
Stebbins Lundgren.
Lamb Lundgren.
Full Janetti Lundgren.
Bajra Lundgren.
All right, that's unanimous. So again, thank you to everybody that was interested in this, and we appreciate it. The town clerk will reach out to both of you to get you sworn in and get you information on when the upcoming meetings are, so thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, are we at 7 o'clock yet? We're a little shy of 7, which means we're making good time, so we have.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, good night.
Okay, are you with the pizza place?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, so the next item is Hamada Incorporated, Doing Business as New York Pizza, to El Mahandre, Eastern Group Incorporated, Doing Business as Crispy Crust Pizzeria at 690 Depot Street, Eastern. If you want to come up, I will give a little bit more context to this.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, my name is Makar Sotki. I'm sorry, it's hard to say it, Bob.
That's okay, let me just see where I am here. Do I not have this in the packet?
You should, it's on page 3 of the evidence.
Oh, here it is, sorry, I was looking right at it. So we have an application to transfer the Common Victualer license. That license is for places that have seating, essentially, the seating in your restaurant. We're gonna try, you're asking to transfer that to Crispy Crust Pizzeria, and the application has been reviewed by town departments, and we could consider approving that, subject to the applicant satisfying pre-opening inspection requirements and obtaining a new food service permit with the Board of Health prior to opening.
I did today, actually. Today, Mr. Tem, he was there in the place, and I passed the inspection, and also Captain Green from the Fire Department, he came down, everything is good.
Okay, great.
Both police, Health and Fire, and they both confirmed that.
Okay, have you already been working there, or are you new to the business?
Actually, I've been in the pizza business for 18 years now.
Okay.
But the one in New York Pizza, I just get it like last week. I've been away for about a year from the food business. I had the surgery, and I had to stay away for about one year.
Great, where are your other places?
I had Two Forever, one in New Bedford. Last one was in Fitchburg. I also, I was serving the student of Fitchburg State College for about one year.
So you're on opposite ends of the state for these.
Everywhere.
All right, great. So you know how to run a business and how to run a restaurant, so congratulations to you on your new restaurant.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Anything you want, so people watch this at home? This is an opportunity for you to give a little pitch for your restaurant? What's so good about it and what's the, what's the best-selling pizza there?
So we're going to give it the Italian style, which is like the most popular one in Easton here.
Mm-hmm.
Stew pizza style, the Italian one, which is the center crust.
Yep.
And also the Greek style, which is the second crust. I found out for last past week, it's, the people love here the Italian pizza, so we'll keep it the same. I'm going to add a few more items to the menu, which is for the vegetarian falafel. I'm from Egypt, so falafel is come from Egypt, actually.
I love falafel.
We're going to have like a new stuff to the menu. Hopefully the people of Easton like it. We try to work on it. I have another two partners, they help me out, so we have a big plan. Hopefully we'll make it.
Excellent. Well, I think that's smart to have vegetarian, and I think there's a lot of people that like gluten-free pizza. I have tried it myself, it's okay, but, you know.
That's probably my next. Actually, I have two daughter, they're both vegan, so try to like serve it more.
Great. Well, the Pizza Place has a good reputation, so, so I think you'll do really well there.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Good luck and thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Mark is chair of the Economic Development Council. We all care about business, but Mark cares a little bit more than everybody else about business. He's the contact to go to if you have, if, if, you know, you want to talk about doing business in Easton for you or other people watching, so.
I appreciate it. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right. Craig, you want to make a motion?
So we're going to transfer the common victualer's license from Hamada Inc., doing business as New York Pizza. Now, if I say this wrong, you can correct me. El Mahari Eastern Group Inc., doing business as Crispy Crust Pizzeria at 690 Depot Street, Easton, Mass.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Barger, yes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you for choosing Easton to do business.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
You too. Thank you. So I.
I'll be your honor.
Thank you very much. I would like.
All right. So let's do some one-day liquor licenses.
Do them all as a slate?
Can we do them all as a slate?
We can all do it. All the options.
All right. So we have four one-day liquor licenses. I asked them who the entertainment was going to be on those days, so I'm going to read the, the dates and everything first and then I'm going to go back and mention who's playing on what date, because that was important to me, and I'll give you my personal commentary on them. So we have, at Oakseam's, their winter concert, February 10th, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The snow date is February 17th, 2024, same hours. The March 16th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The snow date is March 23rd, the same hours. April 27th, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. We're transferring now to a rain date is May 4th, and Oakseam's Spring Concert is May 11th, 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The rain date is the 18th. The, the entertainment for February 11th is called Disco Dream. March 16th is Jack Colombo and Friends. He's, he plays a lot around here and people are familiar with him. April 27th is Jake and Jenny. They played at our summer concert series along with Jack Colombo and were very popular. And May 11th is the World Premier Band. There, that will be their first time in Easton, and if you were around in the 80s, you probably danced to them. They are an amazing band, so definitely put that on your calendar. All of them, put them on your calendar. But just want to give them a shout out because they're new to the lineup here for, we've had some really great concerts, not only with the cultural district, but the Lions Club puts a lot of concerts on, too. So.
So we move to approve the four one-day liquor licenses as a slate.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb slate.
Stebbins.
Stebbins slate.
Lamb slate, Full Janetti slate?
Barger slate.
Okay. So that passes. So we are getting.
Five minutes away.
Getting close. Five minutes away.
Resignation there.
Where is that one on the second page?
Number 10.
So number 10, we have, oh, we have an acceptance of a resignation on the Tricentennial Committee, Nora Youssef, for a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
So I'll move Barger.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Stebbins, Youssef.
Lamb, Youssef.
Full Janetti, Youssef?
Barger, Youssef.
Okay. Was just going to make sure of that. I'm like, oh, this is great.
Right. So I do want to thank Nora. Nora is Lee Williams' granddaughter and has been very involved in the Tricentennial Committee, and we hope that she will stay involved, even though she's not officially on the board, and I think she will. So thank you, Nora, for her time. So what do we have? Do we have?
Item eight, which Wayne is here.
Wayne? All right. Come on in, Wayne.
He's looking at the doorway.
Hi, Wayne.
Hello, Wayne.
Good evening.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Thanks for having me.
All right. So item eight is a vote to authorize, for authorization of the Community Preservation Act Grant Agreement, CPA ATM 23-01, Town of Easton and the Trustees of Reservation, 200 High Street, Boston, Mass. The Governor Ames Estate Recreational Improvements and Carriage House Renovations. So tell us what all that means, Wayne.
All right. Well, thank you. So I'm Wayne Beitler, Community Planner in the Planning Department. I'm also staff support for the Community Preservation Committee, and as folks here and at home know, Easton adopted the CPA almost two decades ago, have done a number of very successful projects. And as the CPC over the last few years is contemplating more and more complicated and more expensive projects, especially with entities that are not within the town umbrella, they're looking to institute grant agreements to guarantee performance, to ensure that the work is done accurately, especially for construction projects, to keep them within budget and on a good timeline. And this is the first of several that they've been contemplating. So, excuse me, I'm not feeling well. We're looking for the library roof that was approved this fall to come up in the next few months as well. But this one is for the Governor Ames Carriage House Renovations and the landscape improvements over at the Governor Ames Estate.
Okay. So this town meeting authorized $276,000 of CPA funds for recreational improvements and carriage house renovations at the Governor Ames. Let me see. The trustees have reviewed and signed the grant agreement and town council has reviewed it and approved it as well.
Correct. Yes.
All right. Great. Well, I think this is a great idea to have these grant agreements in writing. It gives everybody the, the instructions on what has to be done, when it has to be done. It's.
Exactly. So, and for previous projects, it was a little less urgent, but as, as I said, they're looking at larger and more expensive projects.
Right.
It becomes more vital to have these things spelled out in advance and have a grant agreement in place.
Well, thank you for making that change and bringing it to us.
Yeah.
All right. Any questions, comments from the board?
No, thanks for being here. Feel better.
Thank you.
Same. Thank you. Hope you feel better.
I want to vote to authorize the Authorization of Community Preservation Act Grant Agreement, CPA-ATM 23-01, Town of Easton and the Trustees of Reservation, 200 High Street, Boston, Mass. Governor Ames Estate Recreational Improvements and Carriage House Renovations in the amount of $276,000, which is approved by Article, at Article 15 of the Easton, May 15, 2023, annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay. So that's Barger and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Full Janetti, yes?
Barger, yes. Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne.
Appreciate it. Thanks for having me. Good night.
All right. So, so next we have a public hearing, change of hours for a Section 12 on-premises restaurant, all alcoholic beverage license, the Gianna Restaurant, LLC for premises situated at 3 Roosevelt Circle, Easton, Mass. Could you read the, the hearing notice?
It's not seven.
I got seven.
Sorry. Mine is also on. The clock is wrong.
2:00, 7?
Hang on. Yeah. Just read the public.
Select Board of Easton, as licensing authorities, will hold a public hearing in the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass, on Monday, January 8, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. to consider and act upon the application of Gianna Restaurant, LLC, for a change of hours for an existing Section 12 on-premises restaurant, all alcoholic beverage, beverages license for premises situated at 3 Roosevelt Circle, Easton, Mass, with a plan on file with the Select Board's office.
Okay. Come on up if you want to sit down.
Either way.
Whatever is more comfortable for you.
I can do that.
If you'd just introduce yourselves?
Absolutely. Good evening. Michael Spillane, on behalf of the applicant, and Brandon Chase is with me. He's one of the co-owners and managers of the LLC.
Okay. And so you're looking to expand your hours?
That's correct.
And that is to 1:00? I'm trying to see. Is it every night?
It, it is every night. The intent of the applicant is not to be open that late, though. They really only want to be open until midnight on Fridays and Saturdays and 11:00 every other night. Just thought it would be more easy administratively to, to just make it 11:00 to 1:00. That way, when they, when they are closing, they don't have to pick up drinks from tables if people are still finishing their food. They don't want to be in violation of, of that, but they don't have any intention of being open later than those hours. The patio is going to close at 11:00 regardless every night. So, you know, and they're, my understanding is there's a couple of the restaurants in town that have licenses that are available until 1:00, but they don't, they don't use them currently. So just sort of for consistency purposes is why we were asking for the 11:00 to 1:00.
So I can tell you that you can't find any place that, that you can go that late. It's, Easton kind of rolls up the sidewalks around 10:00. So, so there's that. But this is a unique situation because we have not had a liquor license applicant come before us that has had a neighborhood really strongly come out in force against the liquor license at all, let alone the hours. So when, we did have the hearing in September of '22. Was it '22 or '21?
Yeah.
22. The neighbors came and they were very vocal that not only did they not want to have extended hours, they didn't want a liquor license at all. And I think that they had some legitimate reasons. I did go down to Gianna Saturday afternoon. Somebody was looking through the window. I was glad nobody came to arrest me because I did walk around behind the building and actually look and see what that looked like. Because when we first talked about it, nothing was built, so it was hard to visualize what that would be. It's, it's very, very close. It, it meets the property line of the house next to it. And I know that they did, you did put a white, what's the material that, you know?
PVC.
A white PVC fenced, but it doesn't go around the whole perimeter of the property. The, the white fence goes to a certain level, and then after that, it's a mesh fence.
Yep.
So my biggest concern about this is the, the noise outside, you know, or the noise coming and going from the establishment. I think that the neighbors did have a valid concern. Under no circumstances would I feel comfortable moving the outdoor time limit, but you're saying that.
Understood.
That's what, you're, you're in, we're in agreement on that.
Correct.
No. As far as going to 1:00, I, I just, I don't know. Personally, I just feel like we should wait it out and see. You, you haven't been open yet, so we don't know what that's, what that's going to look like or sound like. I wish, I wish you would come to us a couple of months after opening to, to see about it. I understand probably why you're coming in now, but I don't know. That's, that's just my thoughts on it, so I just want to go around and hear what the other board members have to think.
Yeah, no, I, I feel the same way. It's, had we just been able to test drive it and get to, you know, kind of, I, I think you guys are going to be wildly successful. That's fantastic. And a lot of people are excited that you guys, and we're, we're excited. I'm excited to meet there. So, but I appreciate, too, that your understanding about the outdoor hours, too, and willing to keep that at 11:00. And I think just because there's a, there's a place here where we can also appease the neighbors and help you as well along the way, right? Because this, what we want to keep is a balance, a harmony. If we said to midnight on the inside and 11:00 on the outside, you know, then it's, we're conceding an hour or conceding that 1:00 a.m. to them, and we're saying, no, this is, you know, we still are, are working with you on this, and this is how we're going about it. So that, that would be, what I would like to do is go to midnight on the indoor section and keep it at 11:00 for outdoors.
I appreciate both of these perspectives. I genuinely do, and I've seen the location as well. The fact that an indoor license till 1:00 a.m., it's indoors, so I'm comfortable with going till 1:00 for indoors and 11:00 for outdoors. I don't think it will impact tremendously afterwards. I don't, I don't see you guys having a massive crowd after 11:00 inside the building that will, that will be, impact the exterior of the building after 11:00. The idea that there, there might be a place in Easton where you can get food and drink after 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock sounds wonderful to me. We don't have that. I mean, I know there are permits that go till 1:00. I think Stoneforge goes to 1:00, but nobody exercises it. So, you know, I think in this case, it's, it's giving you guys latitude. You had mentioned you probably will not be open till 1:00 a.m. on.
Never.
Never.
Yeah, it would be very rare. It's just if it 12:01 rolls around and somebody is finishing up, you, you have to take their drink away. I mean, that's, it would be nice.
Sorry to interrupt you. I just want to reiterate too, that is the goal, right? It's not to stay open till 1:00. It's to make sure from a, from a operational perspective, we aren't pulling drinks out of people's hands. We do have that kind of flexibility to let them finish their drink and, and, and get out of the restaurant. So the, the restaurant industry is obviously, it's, um, we're obviously, we don't want the, we don't want the noise outside either for us, right? We don't want the extra people hanging out there where we can't see them. We will have security on site. We will have security, you know, making sure people are outside of the parking lots for noise and things like that. We are aware that they are close. My partner owns two restaurants in Milton, and they are surrounded by triple deckers. And I mean surrounded, like every, every angle you look, and they were able to manage it to a point where they have an outdoor space till 11:00 as well, and there's been zero problems there whatsoever with any sort of noise issues. And they're much more closer than we are. The other thing I'll say is we have no doors on that side where, other than one door. And that door doesn't get access other than deliveries and for staff leaving, which is probably about a handful of them just leaving. So from a noise perspective, there's really nothing going on on that side of the building if we clear off the patio. There's nothing. Everything's going to be facing the other direction towards Stoneforge. And I don't believe you guys have already had any noise issues with Stoneforge, but we expect to have the same issues, or no issues, I should say.
And you've, you've been down this road before. This isn't new to you. You have restaurants in Milton.
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, they, I appreciate the idea of let's wait and see what happens, but you guys have, you've done this before. You're, and you've spent, frankly, you've spent millions of dollars developing that. I would like to support what it is that you want, and I think it will, it will not impact the neighbors. It's inside. It's inside.
What time is your kitchen going to close?
So we would like to stay open to 11:00 on the kitchen, which is another reason why you can't get, if we're closing at 11:00, we can't take an order till probably, you know, last one's probably 10:15. So we want to take, take them up to 11:00 as well. Like you said, there's nothing to eat after a certain amount of time. And in the restaurant industry, if you, if you're open a certain amount of hours for the first six months to a year, you're going to be remembered for, for closing at that time, and you may never get a check back to see if you're, you're open. If you start open that way, you're, they're always going to know that you're open that late. Changing hours in a restaurant is, is difficult because people remember, you know, how late you're open, right? That's why we're trying to do this now and not in six months.
That's a good point. Craig?
I, I just remembered the number of, of Butters who were here in September of '22, and they were pretty upset about the whole issue of the liquor license. Just your being there in the first place was upsetting to them. And as Dottie said, you're, you're right on their, on their backyards, okay? And I'm more inclined to say, let's find out what happens. I don't know why you come now when you told us in '22 that you were going to be a high-end restaurant and, you know, good quality meat and food, 11:11 was fine. And then all of a sudden, it's, it's changed. And I, I for one think that we should wait and see what happens. As, as Mark said, we don't want to hurt businesses. At the same time, I think we have to have a responsibility to those neighbors to say, we told you 11:01, and now all of a sudden, they're not even here, we're going to change the hours? I, I don't think, I personally don't think so.
Can I just say one thing to, to, to that point? I think the original application was the request for 11:01. I was not obviously here at the original hearing, but my understanding was it was originally asked for an 11:01 license, and through discussions with the board at the time, it was agreed upon that it would be 11:01. But as, as Mr. Chase indicated, changing hours of a restaurant six months down the road becomes a, a more challenging issue than, than paring it back.
Well, I did go back and watch the meeting to just refresh my memory on what we, we talked about, and I was, I didn't, I wouldn't have remembered it had I not watched the meeting, but the application was for 11:01, and during the meeting, they wanted, they, after they filed the application, wanted to change it. And we, we voted it 11:01 because that was what was on the application that night. And I feel like through this process, this time, Sean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like there's been a lot of movement around what the request was going to be, or am I confusing that with the last one?
No, there, there was the clarification that Brandon, I had him send me an email what he was referring to, and that's what we shared with the board.
Okay.
I will say too, sorry, there was some, there was a lot of miscommunication with our original attorney. We've always asked for the, the 1:00 AM, and we didn't actually look at what he submitted prior to submitting it, and it was 11:01. We, it was, the entire time was meant to be 1:00, specifically between Tony and myself.
So that explains why during the meeting they asked for 11:01, but the application said 11:01?
Correct. So that was our mistake. We didn't go through the paperwork enough. We didn't have a chance to talk to Rick. We didn't even, we just assumed he was following our lead and, you know, asking for the 11:01. So that was just a clerical error. That wasn't a, um, coming in and changing our request. It was always been 11:01. And based on his recommendation, he said, you know what, just get the license open, and then when you get ready to open, we'll go back and modify. Whether that was good advice or not, I don't know, but that's why I'm here.
I can understand what you're saying, and honestly, I'm really torn about it because I can see your perspective, but, you know, when we had the hearing the last time, we had to notify the Butters because it, because of the nature of that hearing, and there's no notification to the Butters for this, so that, so I feel like if they knew we were having this hearing, we'd have a room full of people. And I really just, you know, being down there and seeing how close it is, I'm glad that we're all in agreement on the 11:00 o'clock for the outside because that's my bigger concern. But even just the comings and goings later, I think in my heart, I feel like it's a moot point. I wish you all the best in, in having that place full every single night to, to do great business, but I just feel like, I, I just feel uncomfortable to make a decision like that when I know that the neighbors were really so upset. I'd rather wait, show them what a great neighbor you are, and then feel confident to change the hours. Because if we change them now, we can't change them back again. And I just, I just would feel more comfortable waiting, trying it out for a couple of months, have you come back again. And, you know, I, I guess I would be willing to concede to midnight, but I, I definitely am not going to feel comfortable with 1:00, and it's only an hour, right? So.
And I, I don't want to speak for you. I think, I think they would be comfortable with midnight if, if the board were, were willing to, to meet halfway. Again, even, even just the idea of not having to pick up drinks off the tables, you know, while people are eating is, is an uncomfortable situation to be in.
Do you guys do it in 15, in 15-minute increments or no? Like if 12:15, just enough time to say 12:00 is it, and then we pick up the drinks? Do you guys do that, or is it per hour?
I don't, I don't know the details on that, and I don't, I don't know that.
It looks like after 11:00, we could determine any time.
The board has discretion between 11:00 and 11:01 is by right after 11:00 is up to the board.
Right.
So I don't, we don't have a local policy that I'm aware of that says it has to be full-hour increments.
I mean, if there was a problem there and somebody was trying to, you know, say that was 12:15 instead of 12:00, could that be a problem? Maybe. I don't think that that's what's going to happen or what, that's what the intention is, you know? Nobody's going to be down there policing that, but we, we have to have a certain amount of good faith with our restaurants that they're going to act appropriately. If it started to inch into it's after, it's after, you're going to have complaints, especially because people are really watching that. So, um, you know, we have to have good faith to a certain point on that if it's a matter of a couple of minutes, you know? But if, if we hear, you know, there's, there's cars there a half hour afterwards, you know?
We don't want to be there lady, that late either.
Right.
So, we, you know, nothing good happens after midnight, so we, we do not want to be there either.
I tell my kids nothing good happens after 10:00.
Right. Yeah, you're probably, you're probably right on that.
10:00 is pretty early.
But this is purely just a logistical request, just trying to make sure, just ensure on us and our staff, making sure we're not looking at the clock at, you know, every second, and then we're, you know, having to pull, you know, drinks off of people's tables, and that's really it. And like you said, I don't think people are even going, there's not going to be a large crowd at that time anyway.
Right.
You know?
That's, that's why I'm in favor till 1:00, but if, if there's a concession that satisfies the board and them, then I would, I would be in, in favor of midnight.
Yeah, we would appreciate it.
I would not be in favor of, of 11:00. I don't, I just don't see how this inside with a small crowd, maybe twice a week, is going to impact the neighbors.
And, you know, if after this happens and you're in business for a while and you feel like, you know, there's some dire reason that you needed to be 1:00 and you've been a great neighbor, it looks like, you know, it looks beautiful, it looks like you've done some really nice landscaping around it, there's some trees that you've planted back there that I assume are going to grow up to be, you know, even more of a buffer. You know, when you, when you demonstrate that you are a good neighbor, there, there should be no problem if you felt like you needed to switch it to 1:00, come back, you know, after a while.
Like I said, the most important to us is the 11:00 to 12:00, not the 12:01.
Okay.
That's the most important.
And what days are you asking for that?
Just Friday and Saturday.
Just Friday and Saturday?
Yep.
Do, do you, do we want to make that stipulation Friday, Saturday, or just change the hour 70s a week?
No, Friday, Saturday.
It's Friday, Saturday?
Well, that's what he's asking for.
Okay.
Are I missing anything that we should talk about or know about?
Nope. If the owner is willing to, to work with the board, I think that's great. And, you know, maybe 12:00, 12:15, whatever the decision was on Friday, Saturday, I would ask that it be specific and clear that it's limited to be interior premises. The exterior remains unchanged. And our office can stay in touch. I assume if there were any complaints, we would hear about it, and if the business owner is operating, and there aren't any, then we'll be in touch with them.
Okay.
I'm going to agree with you.
Is that reasonable to?
Absolutely. Great. Thank you.
We don't, I don't generally ask that. I don't know why I just said that.
That's okay.
We make the decision, but, but, you know, you know, when we have a new business come to town, we want to do it in good faith. We want you to be successful. We're going to eat at your restaurant, especially after long meetings when no, no place else is open, so.
There you go.
But, but in all sincerity, we want you to do well, and we want this to be a good partnership. So it's good that we're all off on the right foot, right? So Craig, if you want to make a motion?
Well, I'll let somebody else make the motion, because I'm still at 11:01 as far as I'm concerned. And it, I want you to have success. I have many, many friends who were dying for you guys to open, and when you told us about the restaurant originally a year ago, it sounded really terrific, so we were, all of us are very much looking forward to it. But I'm just harking back to the, the Butters, and when you see how close you are to those, those houses, I, I just, we told them 11:01 and, you know, I, again, I think as Dottie said, if you guys come back in six months and say, hey, look at this, we, we've got great relationships with the neighborhood, they're not complaining, whatever, great. But I still think 11:01 is.
Does anyone complain so far, do you know? Has any, there been any issues?
No, not that I've heard of.
No, but in fairness, nobody's working out there at 11:00.
No, 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 I'm just wondering if there's any actual noise issues.
Well, the same Butters complained about Stone.
They said that the Stoneforge is very loud, and they can hear that at their homes too, so, and they have complained about that over the years.
And they complained about Queesit when we were building Queesit too, so, I mean, that, that, it's been consistent. But I, I just think I, personally, we, we wish you much success. I'll, I'll vote 11:01.
Fair enough.
Can I make the motion?
Sure.
So I'd make a motion to change, for the change of hours from, on Fridays and Saturdays, from 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM midnight, and then maintaining the, I guess it would be Sunday through Thursday would stay 11:01 on the interior, and it'll stay seven days a week, 11:01 on the exterior.
Did that line up?
Got everything?
Okay. Second.
All right, so that's Stebbins and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes?
Bajra, no.
So that's three yes and one no. All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We have an open house tomorrow night, if you guys want to come, tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 8:00, open house, bars open, apps on, and then we're two soft openings on Wednesday, Thursday, open to the public on Friday on, reservation only on our website, so.
Awesome.
So hopefully we'll see you tomorrow.
Great. And you want to tell us real quickly what kind of food you're going to have again?
Yeah, we just tried all of it. It's incredible. It's Italian dishes, a lot of fish dishes, sushi, pizza, filet, short rib, five or six different desserts. It's phenomenal. It's very good.
So to put all the rumors to rest, this is not another Italian restaurant in Easton?
No.
It's American fare, right?
It's a modern American restaurant, yeah.
All right, great. Awesome. Well, best of luck to you, and we will see you, I'm sure.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a great night. You as well.
Suggesting we had enough Italian restaurants in town?
No, they're, I'm Fulgenetti. We can never have too many Italian restaurants.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think where we left off is item nine, vote for a contract, WAT 2021-01, amendment number five for Environmental Partners Group Engineering Services, Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant.
Okay, Dottie, search field, some of us tonight, they were filing some multiple days a nights, so we have a contract, David, contain the packet, I'm just going to pull it up. This is, we add 9 weeks to the delivery deadline to the Red Mill Road Water Plant Construction Project. This amendment specifically is for resident engineering and construction administration services from Environmental Partners, who are our owner, manager. The project was originally slated to be completed late this month. It's in the slide about 90. It's largely affected just supply delays outside of the GC's control, specifically related to variable frequency drives and other electronic components for the water plant. It's mostly complete. This just gives us time to get us over the finish line, and it will add up 98,800 engineering and construction administration services to exist at 2.8 million, close to 2.9 million. We have a contract to refund it out of existing, that 98,000 amendment, we fund it out of a contingency fund of about 1.15 million.
Okay.
We recommend it.
And the completion date is not March 4, 2023, it's 2024.
So.
Good catch, Craig. Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I move to award a contract, WAT 2021-01, amendment number five, Environmental Partners Group Engineering Services, the Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant, a total amount of 98,000, where is the number here? Hang on one second. 98,800.
Second.
That's Bajra and Lamb?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes?
Bajra, yes.
All right, great. That passes. All right, next we have article, I mean, agenda item number 11, vote for consideration to exercise right of first refusal under Mass. General Law Chapter 61 AS dot 14 and possible purchase regarding 69 Howard Street, Easton, Mass. So we talked about this in our executive session at our last meeting, and this, chapter 61 is developed to support long-term forest land management, and so there's tax relief to properties that have 61A attached to their property. If they do want to sell the land, they have to give a right of first refusal to the town. So in a nutshell, that's what happened. The board's consensus was that it did not want to exercise its right of first refusal to purchase 69 Howard Street, given that new information received on December 18th, the seller and the buyer were canceling their sale. So while no vote is required, given the board is not taking action, we wanted to acknowledge on the record that we are deciding not to use the right of first refusal. And I have a motion prepared for this because some of the language on this is a little bit confusing, and, and late in the night, I wanted to make sure that we did this properly. So I'll make the motion. I move to take no action and therefore not exercise the right of first refusal in recognition of the fact that the sale in question had been canceled.
Second, Bajra.
So that's Fulgenetti, Bajra?
Stebbins, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Fulgenetti, yes?
Bajra, yes.
All right, great. Did I miss anything on the agenda besides the last group?
I got everything.
Okay, so I, so item 12, the acceptance of minutes dated December 4, 2023, and December 18, 2023.
So move, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb?